And if we could please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. So we will dispense with the invocation. From what I understand, there was a lot of praying going on while we were gone, so. Okay, so if we could have roll call, please.
Certainly. Creighton?
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Viera?
Here.
Vineyard?
President.
Price?
Here.
We have a quorum. Public comment.
Please, go ahead.
Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54954.3, citizens wishing to address the City Council regarding only, the items on the agenda may do so when the item is read for consideration. Please state your name and address or community of residence. Keep your comments to five minutes or less. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council may not discuss or take action on any item that is not on the agenda. And if I am understanding your motion from earlier correctly, we did amend this to where they could comment on general items.
That's correct. So. And so, if we could report out of closed session, Mr. White?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to report out that there was no reportable actions taken, but the direction was given to staff on several items.
A short report for a long night. In any case, I'll go ahead and allow for public comment at this time. Anyone wishing to address the council, please come forward. You have five minutes. Please state your name for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Our ceremonial matters, because of the length of our closed session, have been moved to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be on May 14th. And we move to presentations. Presentations. Update regarding fiscal solvency efforts.
Ms. Waterman.
So back on, sorry. Back on March 28, 2018, City Council held a special session to, for discussion of financial plan, and topics included seeking a long-term, long-term plan for financial solvency, identifying viable means to deliver services in a cost-effective manner, and identifying potential revenue-generating activities. At that workshop, we had public comment and took other discussion items to, that we will bring back to council at a later date. This PowerPoint tonight is just kind of a timeline of items that will be brought back to council that was discussed in, in that workshop. So we identified the problem. As we know, city is spending more money than it's bringing in. We identified a $2 million general fund deficit. There's a lack of stability in city staffing. We have interim positions. We've not been able to fill permanent positions. Staff has been furloughed since 2012, and normally when staff is furloughed, it's only for a short-term implementation, not for a long-term. Services provided to our residents are not meeting city services, meaning we're still furloughed on Fridays. Office hours are limited, and we're still closed on Fridays. This has also created negative impact on staff employee morale. Let's see. City Council direction. So at the workshop, council provided different options with the following considerations to develop a clear and precise financial plan, obviously leaving no stolen intern for possible options that we return to. Identifying items that would require more than one meeting to reach a consensus. So some of these items, we may discuss more than one time. They may be coming back several times, especially items that will require meet and confer with the unions. Implementation, this City Council will take steps towards the implementation on a special meeting. Well, at, this is tonight's meeting. We had a special meeting, so this is a creation of the master calendar for benchmarks of the implementation that we're suggesting. During tonight's meeting, on the, on the agenda, we're recommending a expanded service contract with VVH Engineering with a hybrid staffing model to provide staff, staffing for the planning and engineering departments. VVH will assist where we previously had a community development director, no longer in that department, so they will offset projects that were in the implementation and follow through with carrying those projects out. We're also looking at RGS contract to help implement some of the different stages that we will go through. Some of it, we're asking for a maximum of $75,000 or an up to, but these are going to be project-specific, and they are going to be task, task-approved for each item. They're not going to be a blanket, so anything that staff can do, but because we are limited on staff and our resources, some of the things, we won't have the staffing levels to provide. We're also including tonight, three different RFPs by our finance director, deputy city manager. One was going to be for auditing services, another for information technology, and as well as banking service proposals. These go along with items that were discussed, looking at all contracts, making sure that we're getting the best use and spending the, of our, well, the best use out of what we're paying. And I apologize to those in the audience. A lot of you are here to discuss the different ordinances that we have, that we're moving forward, personal cultivation, zoning ordinance, pilot program ordinance, and then approval of an RFP for acceptance of applications. We're also looking at a regular meeting in May 14th. At that time, we will discuss the furloughs and the possible ending of the furloughs and the, but that, of course, will be bringing back both different options on what that would, what the implications would be. We'll also do the second reading for the ordinances that are heard tonight. Possible marijuana ballot measure, approval of sub, possible subcommittee to draft a ballot statement, sales tax increase ballot measure, approval of subcommittee to draft a ballot statement. Do you want to mention anything or comment on this item at all, or?
So, on the ballot measure item, so on all these ballot measure items, we're looking at this as a cost savings to the city as it relates to, for instance, you know, the city clerk position, it wouldn't affect our existing city clerk or existing treasurer, it would just be grandfathered in after that. Currently, the city pays about $30,000 to $40,000 to put it on the ballot each time that the position comes up, many times that these positions go appointed or some others, so we can actually save some money every time by not just having to pay the cost of having to put it on the ballot. So that's, that, that's those different, two different ballot measures. As it relates to the cannabis tax, irrespective of the position that the City Council takes on what they would like to do with cannabis, it's our position and recommendation that they put a tax on the, on the books, because we don't know what's going to happen with the state. We don't know if it's, if it's going to become basically something that isn't, that there's no, not local control, meaning it's more akin to alcohol, and you want to have a tax in base so that you can collect revenue. Also, it can be used as an enforcement mechanism in the event that folks are illegally delivering into the city, even if you, if you've allowed something. So let's say that you decide to allow dispensaries or delivery services, but you still have people illegally delivering into the area. This would provide you with a vehicle on both the civil side and the criminal side to get them for tax evasion if they don't have business licenses and aren't paying, paying taxes. So it's irrespective of your opinion on whether or not you like cannabis or want cannabis in the community, our position is that you should have the tax on the books to be able to implement it. The tax in and of itself doesn't create the right to do anything. The right to do things is what's on the agenda tonight, and so we'll get some direction tonight on how the council wants to go. As it relates to the Measure H ballot measure extension, Laquender may have to jump in on this fiscal impact, but this ballot measure is supposed to sunset in 2020?
2023.
2023. I will tell you right now that the city's budget would be devastating, but for the Measure H funding. So the viability of Atwater as a city is largely predicated on whether or not we can get the citizens to extend that ballot measure beyond 2023. We expect to have a lot more discussion about that, some public workshops where we can talk about the implications, but we'd like to put a ballot measure on that allows the city of Atwater to take a little bit more control over its future and to know that we are not hitting basically the apocalyptic, financial apocalypse, basically, in 2023, when that money comes off the books.
And then also on the 14th, we have our public officials handbook. At that time, it'll, we'll be bringing that back to the council, and that just kind of outlines the procedures for different decorums here on the dais, whether or not it be a commission or a council. We are looking to hold a special meeting on May 17th at nine o'clock at that time, and the reason for all these meetings is we have a lot of implementations, implementations? 18th?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, we changed.
Yeah.
18th, thank you. 18th at nine o'clock. But we're looking at a lot of things to implement, so we've got a lot of things that, like tonight, took a long time, so we're hoping not to have such long meetings, but maybe several more frequently to cover all the items that we need to take care of. We're looking at, on the 17th, the administration seizing, authorizing sale of city property, survey results for city fire versus CAL FIRE, renegotiating possible contracts, which we've already begun speaking with them, different contracts with CAL FIRE, dispatch, animal control, these will be with the county. We're discuss, at this time, we'll also discuss possible police position freezes, community development parks, recreation analysis options, tow yard update, solid waste renegotiation update, fleet fuel negotiation. So these are all things that were identified at our workshop, so we'll be bringing these items back to the council and the, and the public so that you have what was requested. Solar contract update, finance, we'll present Willdans fee schedule for lighting districts, as well as an update for CFD option, fee schedule status update, and then again marijuana RFP process, and this will be for informational only. May 29th, Laquender will probably be bringing our budget presentation back, and she will, she will list, we'll have some workshop dates prior to that, and she'll be bringing those as well, so that, and the, the public will be aware of when we have those workshops. Organizational change information, possibly merging of HR and city clerk departments, increasing parking and code enforcement. Then we go to June 11th. This is when we're hoping to have the budget adopted, so we'll have prior meetings to discuss different items on the budget. Organizational change adoption, these are going to be things that will be presented to you, and then we'll get council direction on how they would like, what items they would like to see implemented. Marijuana, the development agreement status and projected hearing dates. This will be informational only, or possible first reading for ordinance regarding the development agreements, and that's going to be in the June 25th. Some of the items, we won't be able to negotiate or take care of, that may take a longer process rather than the dates that we have listed, because they deal with different labor negotiations or contract negotiations with employees not part of a bargaining group or even some of our vendors that are in contract. Public outreach and transparency, public workshops, so after the budget is adopted, first quarter of June, first quarter of 2018, 19, July through September, and the implementation of the financial plan. So this is going to, again, we'll have another workshop like we held the first one, where we invited the public, the council decided what things that they wanted to see. We'll bring the, the public back and discuss what items we are planning on implementing. So obviously, our goal is to create a sound financial foundation, staff stability, retention, improve staff morale, which until we can cover some of these items, won't, won't be able to be maintained. A commitment to provide services at a higher level, and implementation through consistent communication with the city staff and public. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Waterman, from the council? Anyone from the audience have any questions as to this financial plan?
Danny Hernandez on Canal Street, 1904. What's the issue having to do with Chief Joseph and the interim chief that we have here? What is the action on that? And the other question is, the district attorney was here today from the vision of what everybody's seen.
Daniel, that, those are items that are not pertaining to this particular agenda item.
Not even, not even Chief Joseph's, uh?
No, it's not, it's not part, we're, we're in discussion now for the financial plan.
Right.
So.
The only, the only thing about it is, you're spending money on two chiefs. So what is the issue on that?
Again, that's, that's.
If it's, if it's a financial, you know, conversation here.
Right. I, I understand where you're going with it. Unfortunately, it's a personnel issue, and personnel issues, we have to deal with in closed session, and so there's no, nothing to report on that, and in due time, there'll be more information coming, but at this point, all we're discussing right now is, is the financial plan.
Is everything having to do with layoffs and what have you coming up, or adjustments of employment?
Correct.
Or freezing of pay and what have you?
Correct. So we'll, we're going to be having subsequent meetings and special meetings to address all of those things.
Thanks.
Thank you, Daniel. Is there anyone else wishing to inquire as to this particular agenda item? Any comments from the council?
If I could, Mayor, just, just for the council's edification, this is probably the high-level version of it, so there's lots of minutia that goes into all of that, so expect several other agenda items when this is all presented.
Okay. Ms. Viera?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I know that the entire staff for the city of Atwater has, has spent extensive time developing this plan. We spent a lot of time on it behind closed doors this evening. I want to commend Lori for just, you know, taking the ball and running with it. The council for coming together as a team and working very diligently to push this plan forward. We're all excited to, to see a really positive outcome with this, and it feels really good to, to see a little glimmer of bright light in our future.
Anyone else? Okay. Move on to the next agenda item.
Consent calendar. Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar. These items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Are there any items on the consent calendar that council members would like to remove for separate consideration? Okay. Any members of the audience have any consent item that they would like to remove for separate consideration?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Off the question.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Public hearings. Waiving the first reading and introducing ordinance number CS 997, amending certain sections in Title VIII, Health and Safety, of the Atwater Municipal Code relating to personal cultivation of cannabis and medical marijuana.
Mr. White?
Ah, yes, Mayor and Council, so what you have before you is a revised personal cultivation of cannabis ordinance. So the reason that we're bringing this back to you is the law has, you know, evolved and changed. Originally, when this was drafted, the city restricted the amount of cannabis plants that anybody could have within their home residence to six plants. However, under the law, you have to make a provision for those people who have medical recommendations in excess of that, so the city has to, under the law, find a way to accommodate a greater use if somebody has a doctor's recommendation. So this would be not in line with recreational, but it would be in line with, with medical use. So what we've done is created, I'm sorry. What we've done is we've created a regulatory scheme whereby if you have six plants, you would not be required to get an administrative cultivation permit, so you don't need a permit from the city. You would be required in order, in order to have six plants, the, if it's not your property, to have permission of the, of the owner of the property, and you would be required to conform with the city's building codes. This ordinance creates fines for people who violate this provision, and if you go in excess of six plants with the doctor's recommendation, you would be required to bring, to seek an administrative cultivation permit from the city, and that would involve a small sum of money, and that would put us on notice that you have, have more plants so that you alert fire and police, so that they know when they go in there, that they're not locking into an illegal grow house and what chemicals are being used and so on. So it creates a self-regulating system. This is very similar to something that several other jurisdictions that we represent have done, as well as jurisdictions throughout the state of California. So really, this is kind of like the baseline of what you can, you can do in terms of being in conformance with the law. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Just to be clear, you're, when you say a doctor's recommendation or what have you, that's in line with the 215 process, correct?
It is.
Okay. Mr. Vineyard?
Just, I want to clarify, so this removes the ordinance CS 982, is that correct? Which was the old ordinance?
It amends it. If, I don't know if it, it repeals and amends.
Repels that and replaces it with this one, correct?
Yeah.
Now, this doesn't really have anything to do with CBDs then, correct?
Uh, it would not. So this, this, this just goes to the plant and the basis upon which you're able to get permission to grow the plant, meaning that you can grow effectively recreationally for up to six plants, nothing we can really do about it in California. And then if you're going to go above six plants, because, for instance, if somebody wanted to have, you'll see recommendations for up to 99 plants. A 99-plant recommendation in a small 600 or 700-square-foot home may not be appropriate and might create a health and safety, a fire hazard. And so what we're doing is if you're going to go above six plants, then we want the ability to be aware of it, we want to make sure that you're conforming with the building code, and we want to make sure that you're not creating by doing that, a, a public health and safety issue, because your doctor's recommendation, the one thing it won't trump is the public health, you know, your, your public health and safety and whether or not your plant count is appropriate for whatever confines that you're doing. I should answer, there's one other thing I should add. We do add a component to that requires you to keep it behind a locked door in order to be able to prevent minor access and minors aren't allowed.
So the CBDs will actually fall under more of the distribution or sales?
It would. So this will not distinguish between CBDs and THC-based plants.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and we will take your comments. Okay. Seeing no one coming forward, bring it back to the dais. What's the council's proposition?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Off the question.
Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item, waiving the first reading and introducing ordinance number CS 995, amending certain sections in Title 17, zoning, related to cannabis regulations.
Mr. White?
Uh, Mayor and Council, so just in the interest of time, this is just a cleanup measure. It cleans up some of your, it removes some of the stuff that is in your zoning provisions and kind of lays the foundation for the subsequent items that we're about to consider. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. White?
Oh, you also have in front of you some changes that were, that were made, those were circulated, they're available in the back of the room, and they're on your desk. So those go to some last-minute changes, just to basically make really clear what zones, if you were to allow it, that cannabis would be allowed, would be allowed.
Mr. Vineyard?
Yeah, I'd like a copy of those, please.
I gave you one in closed session, sorry.
No, thank you.
He's got, no, I'm good.
I've got it now.
If the public wants some, there were some of that, too.
So there, there weren't, I would consider more clarifying changes than they were substantive changes.
I could ask for a quick question. Is all of this interim going to be available on the web?
That's a good question. What, yeah, once, once adopted, it will be.
And we have to come back for us, we're only on first reading, so we'll be back at the next regular City Council meeting.
Okay. Okay. So this also is for public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak to this? We opened a public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. Okay. Seeing none, bring it back to the dais.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Off the question.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving to our next item, waiving the first reading and introducing ordinance number CS 996, repealing and replacing Chapter 5.60 of the Atwater Municipal Code relating to the cannabis business pilot program.
Mr. White?
Uh, yeah, Mayor and Council, what you have before you is, it's really kind of in furtherance of what the city has, had already adopted in terms of what we consider to be commercial uses, which would include cultivation, manufacturing, testing facilities, and so on. What this really presents to the city is whether or not you all want to allow dispensaries, and if you do, how many. Option number one would place no limit. Option number two would allow two dispensaries but would not allow deliveries. You could change that if you want and allow deliveries. Uh, option three would, would allow all the commercial uses but would not allow what I would call the retail uses, which is the storefront dispensaries. I will say that most of the jurisdictions that we have represented have either banned or gone with the two dispensary models with the idea that we didn't want any kind of monopolies being created, particularly with this type of use, and so we wanted some competition with the idea that if somebody was being a bad actor, there would be somebody with a vested interest to be able to say, hey, these people are doing this, and, and we need to know. In addition to that, one of the reasons that a lot of jurisdictions have gone and allowed dispensaries is because of the fact that if you were to go onto weed maps right now and look and see how many entities were currently delivering to the city of Atwater irrespective of the fact that they don't have business licenses and so on, you would be really, really surprised. You're probably looking around 30 to 45 that are within a reasonable driving range, not even including the, the. even including the folks from LA who are happy to drop it off on your doorstep overnight. So, this gives us a funding mechanism in which to create a process, to have a regulated environment if you were to allow dispensaries, and it creates an environment in which there would be resources available to the city, and it's, as we said from our financial plans, very restricted, to be able to deal with those actors who are currently not complying with the city's guidelines and regulations, and basically the resources to be able to address those bad actors. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Vineyard.
Yeah, I just want to, again, I mean, it doesn't really distinguish between the two different types of the THC and CBD, so are we looking at two of each of those types of dispensaries or one of each, or is it going to be based on application process?
So, the way that the-
Because one is a lucidogenic, obviously one is a medical or isn't.
Correct. So, the way that the state breaks it down is whether or not you allow it for medical use or recreational use. The state doesn't really break it down between CBD and THC and the other cannabinoids that I'm trying to learn, cannabinoids that I'm trying to learn about, but those being the two most talked-about ones. So, from a state licensing perspective, which is in order to be able to operate, we have to put in an ordinance that's going to comply with the state in order for them to be able to get a license. You could restrict it to just CBD if you wanted to, but we're, are recommend, well, we're not really making a recommendation. I will say, most folks, in light of the fact that so many of your surrounding jurisdictions have already gone to recreational and that recreational is allowed, have just by default, you know, kind of allowed it and controlled it and put in, to place development agreements that go into how the impacts of that business operating will be mitigated from a financial perspective.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Raymond.
I was just going to let Mayor Pro Tim Vineyard know, there are places in town already that are selling CBD, because it's a drive from him mostly, so there is some of it already in town, so I don't know if it's legally being sold or not, but.
No.
No, okay.
That's why I'll make sure we do it legally, not the other way around. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, again, this is a, yeah, open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak to this item may come to the podium at this time, state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mark Yandow. I reside at 6162 Mulberry Avenue here in Atwater, and I have a piece of land right behind Tractor Supply, ready for cannabis use whenever Atwater gets their ordinance in place. My comments on your, you know, your options, option A, no limit, let capitalism do its thing, no selection process, no favoritism, no perception of why are these guys getting the permits and all that. Let the, you know, set the standards, set the guidelines, let the market do its thing, like every other industry we have. If 10 people want to come here, let them come. This place, Atwater, is positioned with the real estate that you've got, you know, set aside to bring in a whole lot of jobs. We, you know, our forecast is for, you know, dispensaries, 15 upfront, cultivation for 10,000-square-foot buildings is going to be 10 or 15 headcount. Those are $15-an-hour jobs, those are immediate with benefits. There's a lot of entrepreneurs out here ready to go. Please let us go. Option two, two dispensaries versus none, a lot better than you had. I mean, I thought it was a little short-sighted to allow everybody to produce and cultivate, but not to allow the public to get to it. This allows the public to get to it, so I would just ask you strongly consider letting the market determine, because people are going to buy their cannabis, whether it's recreational or medicinal somewhere. If you go up and down this valley right now, you know, you go to, up to Modesto, they don't have business permits. They've been running for three years. The difference is their sheriff's not arresting them. You know, you go up and down the counties, counties, the dispensaries that are coming here to compete are going to use experience that in Merced you would have been arrested for. So, those are some food for thought. Let capitalism do its thing.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steve Stapleton. I'm with the Sharon Law Firm. We represent a number of cannabis businesses and clients. I, too, would urge you to allow for unlimited operations. While I think capitalism is a terrifically good reason, I would also recommend that the moment you begin picking and choosing, the losers are going to be unhappy, and these are people who can afford law firms to sue. I also think that you would benefit greatly from the fees that would be generated from the capitalistic approach. I have seen charges of over $1,000 for each one of the background checks that must be done through the local police department, when I know that LiveScan can do it for $44. I've seen advanced tax requirements in the order of $10,000. These businesses are ready to spend money to get a license, and if they can compete, I think you should have as many paying you money as possible. I sincerely doubt you'll eventually wind up with more than one or two. The business is going to go through a huge shakeout, but I think in the beginning, while everyone is anxious to get a license, I think you should let as many people who are willing to pay you the fees and the costs and give you money to let them compete and let it all get shaken out and avoid any kind of choices that could lead to somebody being pissed off. That's my position, and I hope you will consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Question for Mr. White. Under this provision, a dispensary or retail outlet, however you want to call it, is it still going to be under the same provisions as, like the commercial grows, being in zoned areas for industrial park or that type of thing, or just exactly where, are there any restrictions on where they would be located?
So, there's some restrictions, but those restrictions can be waived, so it's important to understand the process that you can go through, that people have to go through in order to get approved, is you have to, irrespective of how many you allow, the process would be the same. You'd have to negotiate a development agreement with those folks that would be acceptable to the city, and you'd have to go through a conditional use permit process such that it would be subject to public notice and input and people going on. We've adopted essentially the state's standards, which is a 600-foot setback from sensitive uses and from residential, but with the idea that, and this is what I think the city manager was pointing out to, with the ability for the planning commission, which could be pulled up to the city council, to review that and say, okay, this person's going into an area that would be by default too close, but is there, is this specific area one in which it's appropriate for the use, and they've taken measures despite the fact that they're a little close to mitigate it, and the community is essentially okay with it? So, we've provided flexibility with some guidelines.
Okay. Any other questions? I guess my only other concern is just that, you know, if we put dispensaries out, that they be in an appropriate area. I, I wouldn't want them too close to residential areas and what have you, you know, just schools, things along those lines. I think, you know, a retail outlet might be appropriate, but a, you know, getting close to residential areas, I think, kind of gets into the weeds a little bit on there, so to speak. Mr. Creighton, I didn't try to do that.
So, we're going to treat this basically like a liquor store, if we're talking about the dispensaries, which you wouldn't put a liquor store up next to a school or up in a residential neighborhood, so I want to make sure everybody realizes that we're not heading that direction. It'll be in industrial zones, and we'll work with the police department on the best locations for something like that. Sometimes there's going to be some physical barriers for, like Highway 99 or whatever, that might create a less-than-600-foot area, but those are common sense barriers, but in no way, shape, or form would I support anywhere near a school or residential area.
So, to be clear, one of the protections that the council has, if it's going into an area where you don't like, is even if it's approved by the planning commission, each city council member has the ability to pull up the matter that's been decided by the planning commission to bring it in front of the city council for decision. So, that's a second right that you have in the event that you are unhappy with a planning decision, I'm sorry, a CDRC decision.
So, smart growth is going to dictate how we develop this and how we mature into it. It won't just be a Wild, Wild West, free-for-all in Atwater. It'll be smart growth, and we'll have discussions on what's best for what locations, and it's critical that we stick to that format so we don't turn the community into something that they don't want to be. So, I think that we need to be focused on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Creighton, you know, smart growth and smart placement. I would favor the option of two, and with the ability to deliver, and I would also want to include a caveat that should there be more interest in more dispensaries, that on the recommendation or some type of reporting out of the CDRC, then we would consider those on a case-by-case basis. But, the two with ability to deliver would be my recommendation. I'll put that into a motion.
Option number two, we have a motion?
A second. Well, Jim made the motion, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Call for the question.
Vera?
Yes.
Vineyard?
No.
Raymond?
No.
Creighton?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Interim City Attorney reports, approving requests for proposals for participation in the Atwater Cannabis Business Pilot Program.
Mr. White.
Okay, Mayor and Council, let's talk about how this is going to work now. So, what we're going to do is basically effective immediately, or as soon as we can, the city manager and I can get something up, we will start accepting responses to requests for proposals of folks that, who would like to do any of the cannabis-based commercial or what I call retail, which is the dispensaries and delivery service businesses. We would keep at least the delivery services open for 30 days, given the fact that we have a finite amount on those, and then we would evaluate those, and we would go through a staff-level scoring system, and then, once we've gone through that scoring system, we would go through the process of proposing them to the city council. Prior to being proposed to the city council, we would have to have negotiated development agreements with them. Again, that's our contract with them for the operation and development of their project, and even after that development agreement, they would be subject to the conditional use permit process. Anyone who goes through the RFP process in order to successfully operate would be required to comply with both of those components. So, this, the RFP effectively tells us who they are, what they want to do, who their team is, and kind of lays out their business plan for the city for consideration, because it's important to make sure that these operators are consistent with the city's ethics, culture, and ethos, and not just anybody.
Okay. Any questions, counsel? Any comments or questions from any members of the audience to this particular agenda item? Oh, Mr. Raymond.
My question's for Mr. City Attorney here. You know, I hate bureaucracy in all ways, shapes, and forms. To me, I think the RFP process is adding a little bit of that, so I was wondering if it's possible to allow like a temporary use permit while someone applies with no liability to the city, and if it's not, so they can start operating, right? Because it's going to be that extra step, and if for whatever reason it's denied, they have to close up shop, and, you know, no harm, no foul to the city, but if they are approved, they've already got a head start on the game. Is that, is that something we could potentially look at with this?
I don't think we could because of the fact that, number one, we have a limit on dispensaries, so we could potentially look at it in other areas, but we couldn't look at it in the dispensary area because we have two. I think one of the things that you want to come from this RFP process is to get as many as people as you can to apply, and then to try to take the cream from the cream of the crop, to basically make sure that we're getting the best, not just the first. So, that's the goal of the RFP process, to let people know in fairly quick turnaround time. I think we actually plan on putting this out during the time we're going through second, you know, the second reading, and going through the timeframe in which an ordinance takes effect, so even if we approve it on second reading, it still takes 30 more days. So, we want to hit the ground running and kind of speed up the process, but that's the reason, is because we are restricted and we want to make sure we get the cream of the crop.
So, with the DAs through the RFP, that's for all different aspects of it, though, right? Or is it just dispensaries?
No, the DAs would be for everything, and those would have to be approved. The DAs would include the financial component to it, so we would need those financial components approved by the council before we could ever let anybody operate, even on a temporary basis.
But is the RFP for all the different?
Correct.
Operations?
Correct.
So, the ones that, where there's no limit, is that something we could potentially look at?
So, we would be taking those kind of as-they-come basis as opposed to the 30-day limit, you know, timeframe that we would gather dispensaries, and then see what we've got and try to pull out the cream from the crop.
Okay.
The cream of the crop.
Mr. Vineyard.
Yeah, just since we don't create any further confusion on things that occur here under your Phase Two, can we change that to say the project goes to the CDRC and the city council versus the Atwater Planning Commission?
Oh, did we do that?
Just, I know it's just wording, but.
No, no. Wording matters.
I don't want to cause confusion on people when they read that, please, thank you.
Anything else? Entertained motion. So moved. I'll second. Mr. Raymond.
I think it's late and I'm a little tired. Just to confirm, so that a temporary use permit is something that could be considered for the other projects, other of the dispensaries at the time of application?
It is, but it would, we really can't do anything until we have the financial components done, as well as making sure that the surrounding residents have been notified. It's going to be really difficult to do, except during the waiting periods. In other words, we won't be able to speed the process up that much, because in order for them to be able to operate, we're going to have to notify, like, you know, 300 square feet of the neighbors. The neighbors will have to have the right before they start operating to come out and say whether or not that's appropriate for their neighborhood, and to give their feedback and have that considered to figure out whether or not we want that one to allow. Unfortunately, we have to go to that process before there'd ever be a point where we could allow them to operate.
Okay. Anything else? Call for the question.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, again, Mayor, just as an informational item, we expect that we'll be putting out the RFP this week and setting it for a 30-day timeframe, at least as it relates to the dispensaries. The other ones would go on an ongoing basis, based off of the direction that you received. It's a little bit unusual in the sense that we have second readings still to go, as well as, again, the timeframe for ordinance is to become law, so those who do apply, we would ask to sign a waiver so that they do so knowingly that there's a chance that the city council would change its mind, and if it does, then they were proceeding with that knowledge.
Okay.
Makes sense.
City council matters.
Excuse me.
Yes.
City clerk. Mr. Mayor, for the purposes of clarification, I'm unclear regarding Item 8. It sounded as if what the council was doing was choosing Option 2. Apparently, that's in a staff report that I do not have. I'm looking at the agenda, and I just want to be clear that the motion was to do what the agenda says, which is waiving the first reading and introducing, because it didn't sound that way, but I want to make sure that that was the intent. Okay.
And to be very clear, that would allow two dispensaries. It would also allow, which is not reflected, so it would require us to amend the proposed ordinance to also allow deliveries.
Okay, and none of that's on my agenda, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next slide.
City council matters, city council comments.
Mr. Raymond.
I just, you know, Greg McDaniel lost his mother here recently, I believe it was in the last 24 hours, and I just want to extend our thoughts and prayers out to him and his family. Having recently gone through it myself, it's not something, you know, you're ever ready for. Also, today's my sister's birthday. Also, today's my sister's birthday, while we still have an hour left, just want to wish her a happy birthday.
Mrs. Vera?
No, no comments.
Okay. Mr. Creighton.
I just wanted to thank Gloria Perez for the Love Atwater. Went out there Saturday, it was a huge turnout. Most of the council was out there. Raymond and Supervisor McDaniel bought the donuts. It was a very large turnout. A lot of projects got done around town, a lot of things got cleaned up. It was great to see the community pride. So those of you guys that didn't get to participate next year, or the next Love Atwater, I think is biannual, make sure you sign up and come out. If nothing else, just come out and support everybody and pat them on the back and get them to go. Also, I had the opportunity to attend the Loud New Year in Merced. That was a great experience to see the culture, be introduced to it. I was taken around by members of the organization, and it was a really positive event, and the people of Atwater that attended that and that were part of it. I just want to tell you thank you, and thank you for inviting me to that. That was a wonderful event. And maybe we need a new battery for the computer over there.
I actually have a few suggestions about what to do with this. I'm going to leave them in reserve.
And I think, I want to thank everybody for their patience tonight. It did run long and close session. We have a lot to do. Our city's currently going through a financial crisis, and we're trying our best to resolve that and deal with those issues, and sometimes it's going to be lengthy and confusing for some people that aren't familiar with that. It's not a normal part of what we do as a community, but we're going to be moving through these things so that we can come out fiscally solvent at the end of the game. So appreciate it, and thank you for your patience. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Vineyard.
Actually, I want to also tag on to Councilman Creighton's comments about Love Atwater. I got to work in the determined area, and I think they hauled like three trailer loads of furniture out of there, as well as cleaned up a lot of trash, cleaned the sidewalks. A huge group of people, they gave away, I want to say about 20 or 30 boxes of clothes to the people in that area. And there was a lot of people, as we were working, said they haven't seen determined that clean in a long time, so they were very appreciative. A lot of friendly people that came out, including some of the people that lived there, they actually came out and started helping clean up, which is a very positive thing. So I want to thank everyone that showed up out there. You know, a lot of things happen in this city. Some people wonder how things get around so quickly. You can't drop, you know, I've heard a lot of things, like can't drop a piece of paper, you can't run a stop sign, you can't look the wrong way without somebody in this town knowing about it and spreading the word. I get a lot of comments from people about so-and-so's meeting so-and-so here, so-and-so's, you know, over here talking. What are they doing? Having breakfast together? Eating lunch? Talking about what's going on with their families, you know, maybe sharing how they dealt with a trust problem because they just lost a loved one. It seems rampant in this city. I could show up at Starbucks and talk to somebody, and somebody's immediately texting someone else. Other members up here can meet people somewhere, meet other members or people, and it's out and the phones are buzzing, phones are ringing, and it's really kind of ridiculous. We need to get over that, folks. We all have friends. I had a Realtor, when I was running, told me about, you know, making comments about other Realtors, and there's 500 Realtors in this county, and every single one of them either votes or knows somebody that votes. Well, guess what? There's 30,000 people in this town, and most of them are registered voters, or they know somebody that's registered. So, you know, we got to work on things to go positive. Just because somebody's meeting with somebody or somebody happens to stop to talk to somebody, have a cup of coffee or tea or something, doesn't mean they're trying to make some global warning, a global thing go on. They're not going to launch nukes in this city. Maybe they're just having a conversation. Now, I ran on integrity, trust, honesty, and common sense, gathering all the facts before I make a decision. And all I constantly hear about is other people asking other people why I vote a certain way. If you want to know, ask me. I take in the facts, and if I don't get all the facts, or some of those facts are a little misguided or not quite full, I vote on those facts if I don't have anything to change them. And I don't care if it's in closed door or if it's open session. I try to make it, take those facts and make a common sense decision for everybody in this city. So if you want to know why I vote some way, come and talk to me direct. If you want to know why I'm having a cup of coffee someone, ask me. But let's get on with the positive side of this city, because, you know, the last couple of council members, council meetings, I've watched the audience attack each other, really kind of ridiculous, after attacking us. Let's get over ourselves. Let's move on, because we can't get any better until we do as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick comment about Greg McDaniel's mom also. He's been back in North Carolina, you know, at her bedside here for about the last, I want to say, two weeks, and it's been a very heart-wrenching thing for him. And I ran into his wife yesterday and had a long discussion with her, and it wasn't a very good situation. And so, you know, Greg has been in our thoughts and prayers, and I want to include his mom into that, too. It's been a long and hard road for him, so. Wanted to also congratulate Blaine Lopez, who was our firefighter of the year. We went to that award ceremony, and when you hear, you know, the accomplishments of the different firefighters throughout the county that were awarded that evening, I tell you, there's some good guys out there, so. But our guy was Blaine Lopez, so we want to congratulate Blaine for his accomplishments there. And lastly, once again, we are coming up on the Fourth of July. We are still taking your donations, so feel free to give until it hurts. But big, you know, parade, if you've never been in Atwater on the Fourth of July, Fourth of July and Christmas parade, man, oh, man, that's a big deal day. So please come on out and show your support for that event and enjoy the park on the Third of July with a little bit of a block party with the band Flashback, and they'll be on from 7 until 10, and it'll give the opportunity for the vendors that'll be out there to do a little extra sales. And the next day out at Castle with Daniel Castro headlining ahead of Mike Hammer and the Nails. So if you have nothing to do on the Third or the Fourth of July, Atwater's the place to be. So come on out. I want to also thank everyone for your patience tonight. It's been a long night for us as well as for you, and apologize, but at the same time, thank you for hanging in. And for those of you at home that are watching us on the tube, thank you for your patience this evening. If there's no other comments from the council, we'll call this meeting adjourned. God bless you all. Thank you all.